And you're on.
Thank you. Good evening. Members of the public who wish to attend this meeting may join the meeting through the following links. The link may be found on the website under School Committee, Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings under tonight's School Committee meeting. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the School Committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting by the live stream. This evening, Montague Community Television will be broadcasting as soon as possible, but they are covering the Select Board meeting first evening. The extension of the emergency law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The School Committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. We've already started our meeting in executives in open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. We are currently live streaming and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the GMRSD website. We welcome our Zoom audience. Please remember if you're in the audience to keep your camera and your microphone off. This would be the opportunity for public participation, which is policy BEDH, which has been reinstated to happen remotely, but we have not reserved any requests this evening to do that. Therefore, we will continue with important events. Superintendent Beck.
So there's a bit of a typo in that I didn't put what Wednesday? The Pandemic Response Advisory Committee is meeting. It's tomorrow from four to four forty-five. Gill Elementary School is holding a flu vaccine clinic on Thursday, three thirty to five thirty. Hillcrest is hosting one on Friday, October fifteenth, from three thirty to five. This coming Friday, the Gill Elementary PTO is hosting a bonfire at the school at PM. And Turner's Falls High School is hosting its flu vaccine clinic on Tuesday, October nineteenth, from two to three thirty. There's a Friends of Sheffield meeting on Wednesday, October twentieth, from four to four forty-five. And just a reminder that next Wednesday, October twentieth, is an early release day district-wide for professional development.
Thank you. And I think this evening I saw that Sina Katsoulis is joining us for the Student Representative Report.
Hello. So Student Council has been very busy this past week or so because we are playing Booster Week, which is this like coming week. It's the eighteenth to the twenty-second. Homecoming is happening on the twenty-second, on the Friday. It's going to be at the Turner's Falls High School Courtyard because I think that's what we were able to do. We weren't able to get a venue because of COVID restrictions, so we're going to do it outside. We are organizing ways to get tents and chairs and food and perhaps an outdoor heating. We're not completely sure about that yet, but working on it. We have some volunteers who are scheduled to help set up and take down the decorations. And we are currently selling tickets in the cafeteria for five dollars. And we have forms where you can bring people from other schools. For fundraisers, the tenth grade is going to do a walkathon on November eleventh. I'm not completely sure what charity was decided on, but I can find that out. And Student Council is doing a pie sale that we were selling pies that would come in for Thanksgiving. So that's good. Um, the eighth grade was still in need of an advisor, but they were, there was a mention of Jennifer Luciano doing that. So but it's not, nothing's definite yet. And the eleventh grade advisor might end up being Michael Oberly, but those are like both like still being discussed. The ninth grade is having a class meeting on Friday, I believe, and they're going to finally choose their class color because they haven't done that yet. But we're all having meetings this Friday to discuss hallway wars. That will be happening also on the Friday. That's homecoming. And today we had a fashion show for the different spirit days for Booster Week, and that was very fun. I think it got a lot of people excited. For that, we changed the originally planned preppy day to Country Club versus Country, which was very fun. And I think it'll get a lot of people excited. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Sina. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Sina. And I'm very excited that the students wanted to put together a dance. And even though, you know, it's difficult to stick everybody inside, certainly doing something outside might be something that we do from year to year now anyway. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get some outside heating, perhaps a couple barrel fires or something like that. And we're going to talk to local fire department about that and see if they'd be willing to help us out.
Okay.
Heather.
Do you know how to order the pies by any chance for anyone that's interested?
I'm not completely sure because this was, this fundraiser was just announced, and we weren't able to have a Student Council meeting this week because of the long weekend. But right now, I think you're supposed to just get in contact with any member of Student Council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Sina.
Thanks, Sina. I also just wanted to, Lisa, if you could just agree with me, the bonfire, I originally had it down as eight o'clock at night. It's actually from five thirty to seven. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that correction, Nick.
Okay. Thank you. I was just informed that actually we are now live streaming on MCTV. So it's being carried out live for people at home on television. Thank you. Next, I believe we have the Director of Pupil Services joining us. Hi, Diane.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I feel slightly out of kilter because I have any trouble getting my computer set and spacing back here and spreading late and then had technical difficulties. Murphy's Law. So hi, I was asked to do a presentation and I wanted to just provide kind of a People's Services update and overview and then people can ask questions thereafter. So I'm wondering if I need host controls to do screen share? How is that going to work here? Do I?
You can, as long as you're, make sure that your slide is open in your computer first.
Yes. Okay.
Unless you want me to run it.
I think I can do this now. Sure. There you are. I won't be able to see you, though. At least I won't be able to see all of you if you're on the sideline. So so I wanted to provide just kind of a quick overview. So for the members of the committee who have seen parts of this presentation before, I wanted to just provide an overview for the new members of the School Committee on kind of what we do in People's Services and then have some updates for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So People's Services, I like to think of it as the umbrella. It's the umbrella that covers a lot of different student support programs. So special education, specialized services, English learners, foster care, homeless, military, connected families, homeschool, private school, proportional share students, home hospital students, nurses, school health offices, and transportation. Trying to advance my screen here. So we have kind of district and building-based support staff. So I won't read all of these bullets for you, but you can see that there are a lot of staff who are connected to supporting various programs for our English learners, for our special education students, for student health, well-being evaluators. So these are staff who are, fall under that umbrella of student support services. You will see that we do have a couple of vacancies. Here's my shameless employment plug. If you know of any elementary school psychologists, I will send you flowers. I will send you chocolate. If you have a lead for us, we are in need of an elementary school psychologist. We also are board-certified behavior analyst Kelly Gowen, who had been working in the district. She has had a change in her circumstances and she's left her full-time employment with us, but she's agreed to do some part-time hours to meet the IEP needs that we have for BCBA services. So just an update for the, for the committee. So here's some special education by the numbers of, in our district programs and schools. So we are seeing a rising rate of percentages that is in part affected by some, the percentage of our declined enrollment. We have seen some students who were in the district who have moved to homeschool or, so I can talk about those numbers a little bit more later on. And I know that Brian has shared an updated enrollment report, but we are above the state average. There are correlations between communities that have higher rates of socioeconomic. So there is a, there's a correlation between poverty and increased rate of identification for special education. It's a longer conversation because a correlation is not causal. So it begs a lot of interesting questions, but we are definitely seeing in Gil-Monigou higher rates of students. This percentage was closer to twenty-two percent when I first came into the district. So a year and a half of the pandemic has certainly not improved on how our students are operating in our schools. So we are seeing that higher rate. Trying to, there we go. So our continuum of in-district programs. So we are responsible to offer a full continuum, everything from general related services only for a student who has speech once or twice a week, maybe some OT services. So a related service only to full inclusion programs, partial inclusion programs, and substantially separate programs. In addition, we have to provide a continuum of services outside of the district. So we contract with Public Day, Private Day. We have a student in a residential program and then special education for students who are in institutional settings. So these could be a state institutional departmental health setting or a hospital setting or for students who are adjudicated, who are in a DYS setting and then home hospital tutoring. So these are, again, are the range of services that we are responsible for. I presented this same slide in two thousand and nineteen. Truth and transparency here. I will say that these trends remain of concern. We are seeing higher response, higher caseloads for our occupational therapy, for speech-language pathologist requests for counseling services. And as you have noticed with Joanne and Brian in the building of the budget, we have increased funding and we've had to increase staffing in those positions. We've hired an additional counselor. We have increased, what was a Coda position, from fifteen hours to thirty hours to thirty-five hours. So that is, that is a trend that I have seen here in my time in Gil-Monigou. Other trends, and I want to kind of highlight this tiered focus, whoa, sorry, tiered focus monitoring review. Those of you who have been on the committee might have thought, wow, we just went through a tiered focus monitoring, which is true. But I, I'm here to tell you that we have a new self-assessment that's due this year and then a new onsite review for next year. So it's kind of this continuous review cycle every three years. Last year's cycle was a little bit offset by COVID, so it seemed more condensed. Other things to know, dyslexia screening, reading intervention is something that the district is involved in. We're doing some program development work. As we're seeing increased rates of students being identified with autism spectrum disorders. And we are continuing to work on school readiness skills. That, I think, continues to be a concern with the amount of time kids are spent outside of school with the pandemic. English learners, this number is pretty stable. Last time I did a formal report on this, the district had six point eight percent English learners. We have currently six point five percent of our district. We have very stable population of our English learners. They, families are valued members of the community. They have settled in the Gil-Monigou area, are involved with churches, involved with school events. And so we're really quite pleased. In fact, I think Gil-Monigou serves as a model district for the ways in which we support our English learners. I've had colleagues reach out to me and say, what kind of magic is happening in Gil-Monigou for your English learners? And I've given a lot of credit to Hamena. As folks know, Hamena is our Spanish language community liaison, but also our building principals, our ELL teachers. There's generally a welcoming environment for our English learners. And we have some nice community partners with the Collaborative Educational Services. We have a Title III grant. We also have collaborated with the Mass. Migrant Education Program. And if you have a chance to visit Sheffield, there's a beautiful new mural in the lobby that was painted through the Mass. Migrant Education Program this summer. Educational stability numbers, I don't have a lot of stock in these numbers. Our foster care numbers are accurate, but as the school year goes on, our homeless numbers tend to increase. And homelessness is reported as someone who is without temporary, is in temporary housing, and it's not a cumulative count. It's a count of people who've experienced homelessness over the course of the school year. So somebody could have experienced temporary housing for a couple of weeks in October and then was in permanent housing, but that number is a cumulative count. So for, so far for this year, we have five families identified. That number will go up. Other programs, again, this is a huge increased number with our homeschool families. The district on average has been around forty to fifty families. This year, we have seventy-five students who are being homeschooled. Home hospital tutoring, again, another area this year, three students. My, my first year here, we had fourteen students who were receiving services through home hospital tutoring. Our school nurses, other umbrella under student services. I felt like I had to add like at least six exclamation points. There's probably more there. I can't have my glasses on. But there's been a lot of support. Our school nurses really deserve a lot of credit in collaborating with one another, working with our nurse leader, Melissa Bednarski, working with Brian and the committee. So much has changed in their job of what they signed up for as a school nurse with the pandemic and being a school nurse in the pandemic. So I just want to acknowledge that. But school nurses are involved with a lot of collaborations. Recently had a flu clinic last week. They're very involved in supporting the health needs of our students as well as our faculty and staff, to be quite honest. And then lastly, some family community engagement pieces. So we're continuing our collaboration. I'm looking to be scheduling a Special Education Advisory Council meeting in November. Working with Stacy Lankneck earlier today. We've got a date on the calendar for that. I don't have it in my slide. We have an October meeting scheduled for our English learner parent advisory council. Stacy Lankneck is our family engagement coordinator, is continuing to work with me on looking at just a number of different ways that we can support our families. We've tried to form a collaboration with the Irving Schools for just helping students who are coming to us from Irving, those families, to know what to expect and what we have to offer here in Gil-Monigou. And then collaborating with the Family Center, which is a community action program in Greenfield. And then, so can't see you all, so I don't know if I'm losing my audience here. But just, just to try to wrap things up. So what's new for twenty-one, twenty-two in student services? I know I've had a lot of conversations with my building-based colleagues, with the Teachers Association, with Ron Wood, with principals, just trying to really look at some of the high-need students that, that we have in Gil-Monigou, students who we feel have been impacted by the pandemic, who've come back to school this fall in person and lacking a lot of the requisite skills to be successful. So we've been coordinating on how to best support those students and bring in outside resources. Other things new for twenty-one, twenty-two, as I mentioned earlier, we have to do a self-assessment in special education, our civil rights programs for tiered focus monitoring. And this includes a program plan in special education, it's a document that Superintendent Beck has to review with the committee. It's essentially our affirmations that we abide by all of the legal requirements of special education. We also have indicator data. I'm working with Sarah Burstein on collecting data on early childhood outcomes. We also collect data on postgraduate outcomes. So there's a number of different indicators that we have to collect student data, performance data on each year. And then a couple of other new collaborations. We are doing a program review of our early education supports for students with autism. We've brought in Sprout, Manadak Behavioral Health Consulting. They've connected with Sarah Burstein at Hillcrest, and we have some observation and some data collecting going on to look at best practices for how we're supporting our youngest learners with autism. And as folks know, we also have a collaboration with the Town of Montague and the Center for Human Development to bring a prevention counselor into the secondary building. This was before the committee back in the spring. It's basically a point four FTE position, but we have a counselor two days a week at the high school, middle school, who is working with students who have either concern that they're actively using substances, students who's, who are at risk of using substances due to increased rates of anxiety or depression or other, you know, behavioral, mental health factors or families, students of families whose lives have been impacted by substance abuse. So it's a great resource. It allows our families to access, our students to access counseling without a co-pay, without a waiting list, without having to have insurance to support that because it is funded through the Town of Montague, through a town appropriation using their cannabis impact fees. So we're splitting an allocation with the tech school. So this is our share of that allocation. And then lastly, we're doing some, some tier three reading intervention, really looking at how we can give our teachers tools to support really high-risk readers, particularly at the secondary level. And then lastly, Sarah Burstein and I and Stacy and a few others, certainly teachers are involved, some specialists on planning some family education workshops and really looking at that communication survey from our family and finding out what topics are of priority interest for our families. So I'm pretty sure I didn't take one breath during all of that, but there you go. That is your student services report, and I apologize for it being a bit lengthy, but I wanted to try to provide a background for our new school committee members as well as just sort of a point-in-time snapshot for committee members who spend so much time supporting the needs of the school. I feel like you deserve to have this information. So there it is.
Thank you very much, Diane.
Anyone have a question for Diane while she's here?
Thank you. Yes, Mike.
Well, I have a quick one. Diane, I heard you say, I think that we have to track postgraduate progress of our students in some cases.
Yes, that would be, I feel like it's a test. That's indicator fourteen. And, and actually, I feel, you know, that's another area where I feel like Gil-Monigou was really ahead of the curve. Last year, Stacy Lankneck, Truth and Transparency, related to Mike Lankneck, but Stacy is our family engagement coordinator. Stacy and I talked about that class of two thousand and twenty and concerned that those students didn't have sort of all of the traditional endings of their senior year of school, what that looks like and how to best support those students. So Stacy and I, we, we were involved in outreach to all those families. They received a letter. We encouraged them to connect with our alumni organization. We did follow-up calls to see if students were graduate, you know, post-graduating, are they going to college? Are they working? Do they need support in accessing, you know, job development skills? And so we started that process last year with the class of two thousand and twenty. We thought, you know, this makes good sense to reach out to these graduates. So we're going to continue doing that process this year. So Stacy and I met. She made phone calls to families. We have a database and we sent out one letter. We'll send a follow-up letter in the spring and then we'll do another follow-up letter in next summer and hopefully have some good data to report for indicator fourteen and what our post-graduates are doing.
Thank you very much. That's very exciting. And it wasn't, I mean, the coincidence aside, but as we've been talking about our goals, I mean, one of our missions is preparing students for, you know, life after high school. And I often wonder how we know whether we're succeeding or not. It's a very exciting development. And I want to give you full credit because they say it's an umbrella. It's more like a Fenway Park tarpaulin organization, really, and it's unfair, the size and depth and scope of the office, but thank you so much.
And one last shameless plug I want to do. I know Beth Fortin at the high school does some work and invites graduates to come back and be part of a kind of a career fair event or sort of helping current students hear from recent graduates on kind of life after high school. I want to credit Rachel Bakula here in my office for connecting us with Sam Kologji of Irving, who is class of two thousand and eighteen alum, who is a graphic artist. And so if you go to our website and you look at the website, there are, if I was more clever with my screen share, I'd probably have a picture pulled up. But there's beautiful illustrations that she's done of the Gil-Monigou Bridge of our different schools of Hillcrest, Sheffield. And so it's just lovely to be able to showcase that and make the connection that this is a graduate of a high school. And Jen, I see you have your hand up. I didn't know if you asked, wanted to ask me a question or?
Thank you. I just had a question about the, it sounded like you said that homeschool numbers were increasing. And I was curious, does the Gil-Monigou Regional School District provide like support curriculum? Or is that not, you just have the numbers, but you don't participate in the actual homeschool process?
There is a review process. The state, state law gives families a certain amount of latitude and a kind of a framework that they need to follow. Our process is verifying a person who's applying for homeschooling is in fact a resident. So there's a proof of residency and proof of identity. We're asked to approve something as consequential as somebody's homeschool plan. The curriculum plans themselves are fairly variable. Some families, I wish I was living their child's homeschool plan, and other families, it's less articulated. The district has had families who've asked to come in and make use of some of the district resources, and those are decided on a case-by-case basis by the superintendent. And recently, we had a family reach out and was interested in some social studies curriculum for an elementary student. I know Principal Dejarle was involved in helping provide some, some resources to that family. In general, it is the responsibility of the family to provide those resources. We do include some information on our website as, as well as advise our homeschool families of child find. If there's any, if a child, any family who's, who suspects their child could have a disability, we have to routinely engage in what's called child find, is just to put out written notice about the option of being able to have your child evaluated and such.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, Diane.
Sure. Sorry, that was a bit of a lot, but I will, I can send my, Superintendent Beck has my presentation. If the committee members would like to have it in different form, other than my verbal reporting. You can have it in print copy as well.
Thanks again, Diane.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have the superintendent's report next. Brian.
So overall, the numbers, the COVID numbers in our area are trending down here regionally and in the state. Although this past week, numbers were lower in Montague overall. So we expect that number of twenty-two to go down just slightly. There is a large percent positivity as well as a pretty significant caseload still in the town of Orange. It appears as though the town of Sunderland got their outbreak under control and overall trends continue to head downward in the state. So we'll just have to monitor and keep our fingers crossed and maybe someday get back to normal. Partially and fully vaccinated folks in the county, each increased by Partially and fully vaccinated folks in the county each increased by just one percentage point as of Monday. And the Centers for Disease Control have moved Franklin County's trans, uh, risk of transmission to substantial from high. So the county itself has stepped down just slightly in the CDC rating. Next, I wanted to talk a little bit about food service, and this is something I'm going to keep in the superintendent's report. We got an email actually today from the Department of Education talking about the significant disruptions to the supply chains. And it, you know, it's caused some problems for every school district in the Commonwealth and probably in school districts across the country. But over the past few weeks, the school and district administration have been meeting with some high school students in particular to address some concerns that the students had expressed about lunches at the high school. Again, as with other areas of the economy, school food service has been impacted by supply chain shortages and delivery problems from employee, low, low employment in, in the trucking industry. It's impacted all of our schools at times and it often has made it more difficult to get menus out to families in a timely manner. In addition, the food service staff has, has had to make a number of last-minute menu changes as a result of the delivery of supplies in some cases that weren't received at all. At the high school and middle school, students had indicated that portions were very small earlier in the school year. Although those portion sizes have increased and a salad option has been added, supply chain concerns are still impacting day-to-day options. For example, we could not have lettuce delivered until tomorrow. So salad was not an option at the high school for today. Shortages from deliveries have also impacted the total number of servings available of one or more options for lunch. So I've been meeting at least once a week with some student leaders to ask them how things were going and our, our own representative Sina Katsoulis has really been tracking lunch and lunch quality because of the options that she gets. And so one of the things that Sina had shared with me was that last Friday, cafeteria staff had run out of their primary option, which was mac and cheese. And so no high school students, by the time their lunch came at the end of the day, were able to get mac and cheese. So it's our hope that we're going to be able to increase again, the, the, the number of servings so that certain, by the time the high school students get down, they have all three options. We're also hopeful that we can diversify our breakfast options to include some cooked items as we hopefully will be fully staffed in the cafeteria, in the cafeterias across the district and increase our access to a variety of products. We will continue our regular meetings with student leaders and keep the committee posted by keeping food service considerations as part of the summary report for each meeting. Tomorrow also, I'm going to be meeting with the senior class prior, or at a previous school committee meeting. I proposed a policy that was voted on by the committee for graduation to have unified colors for the graduating class. And I'm going to spend time tomorrow, meeting with the entire graduating class to have a conversation about that proposal and also to be able to hear their voices. And frankly, I owe them an apology. It's really not consistent with my practice and to not have met with the entire class to have that conversation in advance. But graduation obviously is in the spring and if for some reason they feel a little bit different, then I will bring something back collaboratively with students. But I'm attending their class meeting tomorrow so that we can have a one-topic discussion. And then I'm pleased to report that as I walked out back today to check on the Sheffield Playground, I saw the last board being laid and the playground is now officially open. So thank you very much for everybody's help in getting that together. And Mike, thank you for your recommendation on the alternative places to get us some hardware. And that's it for my report for this month, for this meeting.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone have any question for Brian?
Bill?
I just want to relate to the students in, along the lines of your thinking that you should have talked to them first. If they have any disagreement with it, having voted for the acceptance of the blue and white, I'm happy to introduce a motion that meets the needs of the kids.
Thank you.
When that's requested.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Yes, thank you. It's helpful when things are brought to our attention. You know, things do slip through the cracks in spite of our best efforts. Jennifer?
Yeah, I might be a little naive about like volume, but I was just wondering, does the school folks ever think about contracting with local farms for vegetables, especially while you were mentioning that lettuce supply chain? And I assume it wouldn't be like a last-minute choice, but I just was curious if that was ever a consideration when putting food together for the students.
I think Joanne might have some information on that.
Yep. We do purchase from local farms. So we have one local farm that, that does deliveries for us and we have purchased from other local farms as well.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Brian. Next up is business and operations report. Joanne?
Okay, I have a few things for you here. If you had a chance to look at the packet. So the operating statements, I did a final operating statement for fiscal 21 to show you where we landed on that. And so our revenue came out pretty well on budget with a $25,000 surplus which flows into E and D. On the expense side, we, our expenses were a little bit lower than anticipated simply because we weren't open for most of the year. And so we had some savings on transportation. We had savings on, because we had less students at out-of-district placements. We had some staffing positions we didn't fill. We had less subs. You know, a lot of, lot of different things like that. And so you'll see that we have a surplus in our general fund, which is the middle box on that section of the report. Oh, and the other place we had a pretty significant savings was our school choice out, our school choice revolving account, the outgoing school choice student. So, sorry, that's not revolving. So our school choice expense, where we pay for students that live in our town to go to a different town to go to school. That number went down pretty significantly, a few hundred thousand dollars. So I'm hoping that number doesn't come back up this year, but right now, so far, so good. So at the bottom of that report, for the fiscal 21 operating report, you can also see that the school choice revolving account has a pretty healthy balance there. So that's a balance that's going to help us hire some of the positions that we need this year, added positions that we didn't budget for. But if we need more one-to-one paras, or if we have a student that ends up in out-of-district placement, this is some extra funds that we can use for that. The circuit breaker revolving account leveled out. We stopped charging fees for athletics. And so we're really not charging much for expenses to athletics. You see, we spent $28 from that revolving account last year. And I think the reason for that $28 was it might have been a bill that came in after the end of the fiscal year and we had no choice but to spend it from there. Our cafeteria revolving account has a healthy balance right now, which is good because during last year and this year, we're receiving the summer feeding rates for all of our meals. And so that's a higher rate than we receive normally during the school year. And so those funds are going in there to help support us when we ha, are running a deficit, which we will be running next year when we go back to receiving our normal reimbursement rate. We will be in deficit, like I said earlier or another time. Our, in fiscal 20, we had actually built about $200,000 worth of salaries into our general fund budget. In fiscal 21, we didn't do that because we expected to have this larger balance in our revolving account to help cover that this year. But in fiscal 22, we won't be getting the excess revenue. And so we want this balance to stay large at the end of the year. So that way we're able to support fiscal 22 without putting more positions into our budget. Preschool revolving account is another account with about $31,000 in it. Sarah? We've talked about this money and we're trying to figure out a way to spend that money. Useful way to, to use that for our preschool. So we no longer collect preschool tuition for our students. And so we don't charge any salaries there. And so we've talked about, you know, adding playground equipment or purchasing something like that. We just haven't gotten that going yet. And so that money will sit there until we're ready to spend it. Transportation revolving account is that, that's a revolving account that we're able to take some excess revenues in one fiscal year, put them into this revolving council. We have them for a future year. So this is the second year in a row that we've done this and this helps support our future budget. So right now we have $150,000 in there to support the fiscal 21 budget. And if we have excess revenue in fiscal 22, we'll be able to take some of that money and put it into this revolving account again in fiscal 23 to support that transportation budget. And then you see some of our CARES Act funding there. The Esser CARES Act, that's Esser 2 or Esser 1 is the $252,000, the very bottom thing, very bottom item, and we have $33,000 left in that right now. We spent quite a bit of that over the summer. We had about 150 or 180,000 we spent on our summer program. So the 33,000 is what we had in cash available. But there was more money because we had not received it all yet. So that's fiscal 21. We ended in a good place and it led to a decent E and D, which I will get to in a little bit. For fiscal 22, I did an operating statement for that one as well. So you have an expenditure report in your packet, which is line by line showing every single item, every single line. But it doesn't show the projection for those lines and it's not summarized. And I don't think any of you are looking through the 16-page report saying, well, you know, what about this line? So I take all of that and I put it into a single page for you in the operating statement. So from the revenue, you can see that we're going to be about breakeven there also. However, there's two major pieces that are changing. So the charter tuition, charter reimbursement is higher than what we had anticipated. And that could even end up a little bit higher than that this year as we have a significant bump in our charter enrollment in fiscal 22. I expect that number on the expense side to go up as well. So when we get more revenue, we also have more expense. I think Dave Jackson had his microphone on. However, the Irving tuition is down this year because we don't have very many students in seventh grade from Irving. So the charter, between the charter tuition reimbursement and the Irving tuition, it's about a breakeven. So our revenue side, I'm happy with, doesn't look like we're going to have any issues there. On the expense side of things, right now we have, in order to balance the budget, we're spending about 150,000 more from our school choice revolving account. Like I mentioned, when we were looking at fiscal 21 to balance the budget. And, you know, when all is said and done, we have about a $2,000 surplus here that I'm estimating after spending the extra 150 from school trace revolving. And then our other revolving accounts are, if you look at circuit breaker, the amount of money we're getting in fiscal 22 is less than what we've gotten in other years. And so whatever we receive for revenue in fiscal 22, that's how much money can be left in a balance in that fund at the end of fiscal 22. So that's why we're still spending the 250, even if we're only bringing in 150. Our athletics, as you can see, we just have a cup, one item there again spent, but we still have about $22,000 and our projected end amounts for the cafeteria is 140,000 in that range. And there's the preschool money just waiting, but if we spend it this year, we'll keep you posted on that in the operating statement. And then at the very bottom of this, you see the two Esser funds. So Esser 1, like I said, we spent a lot of that money on the summer program this past summer, about 150,000. And so we have a balance of about 48,000 that we're planning to spend this year. And our Esser 2 money, we plan to spend about $600,000 this year on different staffing and programs that we are adding. The balance of that Esser 2 money, the $260,000 will be spent on some staffing for fiscal 23 and it will also be spent on our summer program this coming summer. Does anyone have any questions on fiscal 22? Okay, so the expenditure report was there. We're getting ready to start building our fiscal 23 budget. So I finally have 21 gone, so now we can add 23 to it. So we're going to start by, you have a budget calendar that tells you when different pieces of that budget will be coming to you and what we are doing here. So budget package will be going out to the principals by the end of the month, fingers crossed. And then I'll start bringing you some projected revenue and estimated numbers in November as we're building this budget. We expect to meet with the towns or have the affordable assessment calculation from Montague. At least we usually get that in December, January. And the minimum contribution won't be out until the end of January. So we can't do, calculate actual assessments until that time. Next up is the E and D certification. So that is in your file. We, our E and D is certified at about $900,000. Our cap, which is 5% of our operating budget, is a million, about a million $80,000. So we are under the cap by close to 200,000. So, you know, we probably have a little bit more money in E and D that we can put toward the budget if our chapter 70 doesn't come up for fiscal 23, which I don't expect it's going to come up much in fiscal 23. And rural school aid. So just last week, we heard that we are getting about just under $50,000 in rural school aid. So I think, you know, we need to determine how we're going to spend that. There are some priorities that we should should think about when we're deciding how we're going to spend those funds. And so they say it can be spent on a wide variety of purposes to support district operations with priority given to efforts to increase regional collaboration, consolidation, or other strategies to improve long-term operational efficiencies and effectiveness. So last year, we purchased our pupil transportation van with that, with those funds. And so we're able to save money for our future by having our transportation coordinator drive the van and transport some students. So we're not paying, you know, $200 or $300 a day to transport the students. So we'll be talking about how, how we spend that in later meetings. Capital planning. So we have a number of ongoing projects right now. If you're out and about and you drive by the high school, you'll see that the tennis courts are being resurfaced. Those are looking great. They, that was something that the town approved funding on a year ago or last year, the last town meeting in the summer. So that, we put that out to bid and we're working on that. And then we have a couple of other projects that we really need to get going on. So I'm proposing that we not bring a lot forward to the towns this year and that we focus on what we have to do. What, what's already, money's already been set aside for. The one project that we do need to think about is the Hillcrest floors, but we need to decide how we're going to tackle those floors. Are we going to do a short-term fix while we think about what we're doing with the buildings? Or are we going to do a, a permanent fix like we did in Gil, ripping everything up and putting down new floors? So I think it's a larger conversation that we need to have. And so we're, we're looking at different options to bring forward to the capital committee right now. Different options for those floors. So that's all I have. Anyone has any questions about any of that?
Anyone have anything for Joanne? Thank you, Joanne. That's a lot of information. I'm sure as things come up, we'll, you know, pass questions on to you and we'll certainly. pass questions on to you and we'll certainly revisit a lot of this as we go along.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the school committee reports and the warrant subcommittee approval. We're going to need a vote on two accounts payable warrants. The first is number 3208 dated 10/13/2021 in the amount of $124,795.94. That is basically paying all of the various bills that we've gotten recently. The second is AP warrant 3209, also 10/13/2021 for the date. It's in the amount of $907.60. And that's to pay for the gas we've been purchasing for our vehicle.
Jane, that one is 97060?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I am guilty of transposing that. Thank you. 97060, thanks for the correction. I will entertain a motion to approve those two accounts payable warrants together. Heather, thank you. And second, Mike, thank you. All those in favor, Jennifer?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Moving on to the business portion, the first item that we keep on constantly is any discussion or questions, comments about the remote as opposed to in-person school committee meetings. I know we don't, we haven't received any new information that has changed anything very much. There's still the requirement of masks in the buildings and everything that goes along with that. But we certainly will try to keep up if anything changes. Any questions or comments from members? Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Jane. I, you know, to tell you the truth, I think we ought to suggest through the MASC that maybe the state should make Zoom meetings legal for bodies like ours. I have a feeling that there are meetings we've been able to have that we'd never been able to have. You're talking about setting up a meeting with the negotiating teams. And I can remember from years past, months could go by without being able to set up meetings. And really, it's just because in transportation, being able to be in a certain place at a certain time. Now, I mean, this would be something that we would certainly discuss as a committee and not be going off half cocked here. But really, it has made it easier for us to conduct business. Our viewership and attendance, though virtual, is up over the the time period that we've been on Zoom. And I, I mean, the meetings I wouldn't have been able to make. It's been a real boon, I think, for the meeting industry, but that's just one person's thoughts on the subject.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Heather?
When we've talked about in this past, in the past, I've made it fairly clear that I support staying online. It used to be more because of COVID, sure. I mean, that's how it started. But now I think Mike has a few good points. If we have attendance attire, that's great. And I know especially right now with me in class, obviously, I can make at least a little bit of them. I don't know, it just seems like a really flexible option. That would be so great if it could be a legal option. I know that's not our choice, but that's a great idea, Mike.
Thank you, Joanna.
Um, I'm going, I'm agreeing with both individuals, Heather and Mike. I'm someone that would also push to keep the meetings remote at this time due to the fact that this, the children and the parents, um, the mask mandates, this seems the safest option. And I'm like Heather said, at first for me, it was also COVID. But like Mike is saying, at every meeting that I attend, any town meeting, school committee meeting, conducting business, like Mike is saying, if you really want to jump on and get something done, this is a really effective tool. So overall, I think it works really well often. And I'm, I'm, I'm really happy to hear about that suggestion, Mike, before it.
Thank you. I think it's also, I try to think about it each time and see if there's any new information or new ideas. And I think over the years, it's become, it's occasionally an issue with school committee members who are responsible for childcare in the evening. Or perhaps it's someone who is caring for another family member. And I know in many instances, being able to do the Zoom meetings have made that possible for them to continue. I think otherwise, I think we'd be in a position of having to limit the membership to committee members who don't have as many responsibilities. And while that would be great, I think our members and the ones we've had and will have add so much because of their diversity. If we only had people that didn't have outside responsibilities, that wouldn't be very many people who could be here as part of our, our group. And I think we've gained a lot by making it possible. You know, even a cold or the average flu. You know, if you're not feeling terrible, you can join the Zoom meeting, but we wouldn't necessarily want you to come in person with your germs. Not that we, you know, wouldn't miss you, but that's not been a great idea previously. So I think, you know, there's a lot to think about there. And I think that's an interesting suggestion, Mike. Perhaps something that could come up at MASC. Okay, thank you. Moving on, presentation and vote to approve elementary school improvement plans. And I see we have some welcome guests this evening. We have Melissa and Sarah and Lisa joining us. Thank you all.
And I'm, I'm not sure if, um, if you guys, you know, flipped a three-way coin and made a decision about who's going to go first and talk to Tina about which slideshow she should put up first, but it's up to you guys, you folks, which whichever, whichever one of you would like to go first.
Is that ABC order?
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, you want to do Gil first, Lisa?
Yeah, I could do Gil first, sure.
Okay. Is Tina going to be sharing your slideshow?
Tina, are you there? I, I have it up and ready to share if you don't have it.
Go ahead. If you'd rather.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa.
Sure, okay. Can everyone see it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay. So thank you, everyone, for fitting us on the agenda tonight. Sarah, Melissa, and I have worked in collaboration to come up with some goals that align to the conversations that we had with the superintendent and other district administration in the summer around strategy. And so I'd like to share what Gil's looks like, which, and you'll likely see some common themes across the schools. So first area that we will be focusing on is that, you know, we'll be looking at student data consistently over the, the course of the year, beginning with benchmark data that we are, oh, excuse me, collecting at this part of the year, in the middle of the year, the end of the year, and will be developing specific interventions around what we're looking at in the data and how we can help support students to move forward and continue learning. One of the things we're trying differently in Gil this year is I've set up an intervention block so that K1 and 2 teachers and other service providers are available for half an hour every morning so that we can kind of have an all hands on deck where we'll be looking at data from K1 and 2 students and forming instructional groups based on where we see their needs. So we could have a first grader, you know, being grouped with kindergartners and second graders based on their needs. So it's something that we're, we're trying to be creative about and thinking how we can support students at Gil without a lot of extra interventionists. So one of the other areas is that we'll continue to meet in grade level teams. So because Gil only has one class per grade level, we have a K2 cohort and then a grade 3, 6 cohort. And these teams meet weekly. They're continue to work through the wisdom curriculum and talking about that, changes that they feel, you know, might need to be made, but we are focusing on really trying to implement the wit and wisdom curriculum in fidelity this year. And we're all very much dedicated to that. Finally, the area of social emotional development, this is something that is especially critical this year and in an area that we've noticed that students are particularly struggling with. So, you know, I, my staff were able to provide me feedback on this school improvement plan last week at our staff meeting. And that was one area that they would really like to see some more time invested in exploring curriculums and what we're doing to, in terms of meeting the needs of the whole child. The second area, area is an inclusion and equity. And this is where we're, we're really trying to take a close look at what we are doing in our practices in terms of how we're able to look at curriculum and determine, you know, whether there's biases within. We're planned several professional development days where we will be working with staff and outside consultants. And it's called Brave Elementary Educators Talk About Race. So this is a step in the right direction. And we often find adults have difficulty talking about race. And so, you know, it starts with ourselves. In order for us to be more competent and culturally proficient, we need to ensure that our staff are trained and we're able to have these conversations then with students. One of the other areas that we're continuing to organize is a diverse books collection so that we have titles that teachers are sharing. We have an organized center for them with lesson plans. And it's really to focus on the range of topics that students encounter within their day, you know, anywhere from, you know, sharing to, you know, a different kind of families and bullying. So, you know, we're been working on collecting those titles. Finally, I'd like to administer a school climate survey to staff and students and families for sometime in the spring. And then we'll use those results to determine what are some actionable next steps that we can make to improve in, in this area. Third call is that we are looking to engage our students more actively as partners in their learning. So one area is that we want students' work to be visible. We want students' efforts to be celebrated and acknowledged. So this is one way we can do it in having them promoted on the bulletin boards in cases throughout the building. We are also planning the implementation of the 100 Mile Club, which usually brings in a lot of student participation. And it's one way to collect the school community together and have something in common that we can all relate to and celebrate throughout the year. And then finally, I'm going to ask students to be more present in participating in morning announcements, contributing to the school newsletter. And then we are now planning our first whole school meet towards the end of October. And we're going to be asking classes, students to be part of that assembly rather than, than me talking at everyone. We want it to be more of a collective responsive classroom kind of approach to that. It's more participatory. And then finally, our, our final areas, looking to engage and welcome families as active partners in supporting academics and social emotional development. So we will be working on planning those all school meets and invite our community members to join us. Our teaching staff has been working on creating open house slideshows in which they will be detailing specific areas around their classroom. And then we will try our very first story walk at Gil. And we'll set it up on the campus at Gil and focusing on an area of social emotional learning. So those are the areas that we'll be looking at in terms of our school proven plan for Gil. Are there any questions?
Um, I can't see everyone with this.
Yeah, you might have to stop your share so we can see the panel. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank, thank you so much. Anyone have any questions or comments for Lisa? Melissa? I mean, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
I just picked. Sorry, I'm, maybe everyone already knows what, what is a story walk?
So a story, so Sarah Bursting is the, sort of the expert on story walks. So what I know of story walks is that you take a book and you get two copies and you rip one up. And there's the pages are stationed on places around where, where, you know, people can go and read the page. And there is an artful and creative way to do it that I will be learning how to do. And it, we really would like to get some feedback from families. So we brainstormed some ideas around how we would solicit that feedback. And we thought of, you know, creating, giving them the postcards and, and then putting the postcards into a raffle so that, you know, we are getting some responses and some ideas from parents about, you know, what they liked with it, you know, what they would like to see more of. And Sarah will talk more in depth, I'm sure, during her presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill?
Thanks. About the display of production of, of students in the school, hanging them on the wall or on bulletin boards. I, I believe in the past, there was some issue with posturing stuff, especially on the walls of the hallway as a fire hazard. Are you aware of that or do you have a response to that?
We do, we don't plan on using the walls to put up any sort of student work. We do have established bulletin boards. The Gil Fire Department was just up last week for our fire prevention weekend. And they hosted a number of assemblies with the different grade levels. And they haven't ever mentioned it to me. It's certainly something I look, could look into. And we, there are products that we could purchase that are fire retarded and approved by fire department. So it's certainly something we can look into. And, and it is something that, again, we consider in terms of keeping the building safe and balancing that with the need to just, you know, show, you know, student learning and, and celebrate that.
Sure, I agree. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Sarah, since you're the story walk person, I think Lisa just volunteered you to go next and present Hillcrest Elementary's School Improvement Plan?
Okay. Happy to do that. I think that Tina is going to share my, um, my presentation. I brought my school computer home without my charger and it's running out of battery. So to switch to another computer, so Tina's going to present for me. And so here we go. Thank you, Tina. As Lisa had mentioned, you will see a lot of overlap among the three elementary school improvement plans. We work together very closely to do many things across the elementary schools. So you will see overlap in these school improvement plans. And you'll also note that the four goal areas align with the district's goal areas as well. The organization of the Hillcrest School Improvement Plan follows a different order, but does cover the same goal areas as Gil's. So you'll see for our first goal, it's an engagement goal. And it just echoes the language of the district plan. We will welcome and engage families as active partners to support the academic and social emotional development of all students. So we have three initiatives. So we have three initiatives around engagement this year. The first one is that preschool and kindergarten families will be invited to individualized orientation sessions. With their child's classroom teachers, that should say, not just child's classroom. So those happen at the start of the school year and. A big shout out to our school committee for continuing each year to approve a school calendar. That gives us the time and space to have those individual orientation sessions because they're really a lovely way to start the school year. The next engagement initiative is that our teaching staff will create open house slideshows to introduce families to classroom expectations. Curriculum programs and strategies to support learning at home. Hillcrest Virtual Open House is tomorrow night and the slideshows for each classroom will be posted. Via the school website for families to enjoy with their children. The third engagement initiative is about creating a story walk featuring a book that supports social emotional learning. And the story walk will be set up on campus at Hillcrest. We, over the past couple of years have done several story walks generally featuring books from our diverse books collection. And that's what will happen again this year. Some years we've done them downtown, some years we've done them at parks around the community. This year we'll do at least one on campus at Hillcrest. And as Lisa said, we take a piece of children's literature with really rich illustrations. We, we do have to tear two books apart, which is a little upsetting, but it's for the greater good. The storybook pages are then mounted on big lawn signs and they're set up. In a pathway around the school so that families can enjoy a story together. So those are our engagement initiatives. Thanks, Tina. Oh. Any goal number two, whoa. I think Tina jumped us ahead. I'm going to talk about goal number two and hopefully you'll be able to see that in a minute. Goal number two is around growth and achievement. Educators will regularly monitor the impact of instruction on student learning and will make adjustments to maximize student growth and achievement. So again, you're going to see some overlap here. Our first initiative is around our literacy data meetings that will be held three times a year. To review our student literacy data and to develop tier one and tier two instructional groupings and to plan instructional approaches. That happens in kindergarten and grade one at Hillcrest, not in preschool. Our second initiative is that kindergarten and first grade educators will meet in grade level teams. To review implementation of the wit and wisdom curriculum and to monitor student progress on wit and wisdom assessments. Again, this does not include preschool because the great minds wit and wisdom curriculum. Does not exist at the preschool level. It begins in kindergarten. But around growth and achievement, we do have an initiative specific to preschool. And that's that our preschool educators will meet in grade level teams to plan units of study and to monitor student progress. This year, our preschool teachers are focusing on using the Bridges mathematics curriculum as the foundation for their thematic units of study. Goal number three is about grade appropriate instruction. Educators will deliver grade appropriate instruction with high expectations for all students and provide scaffolding to ensure access to learning. So our first initiative again focuses on wit and wisdom and GOs in kindergarten and first grade. And that our kindergarten and first grade educators will implement that program as outlined in the Gil Montague Literacy Plan. Wit and wisdom and GOs are our new ELA curriculum and we're all really excited about implementing it. And we also know that it's going to take a lot of support in this very first year. So we want to set aside time for that. Those opportunities for teachers to come together. The next initiative around grade appropriate instruction is preschool educators collaborating with the principal. That's me and our director of teaching and learning, Jean Powers, to develop a working draft of a literacy plan for preschool. You may be aware that we have an elementary literacy plan, but it's really a K to six literacy plan. And we want to ensure that we have a literacy plan for preschool. That's really developed by our preschool educators who know the needs of three, four and five year olds best. And then another grade appropriate instruction initiative is focused on the Ready Bodies Learning Minds Program. This is a collaboration between our occupational therapists and our physical therapists and our preschool educators to have daily. Physical activities that are meant to build both gross motor and fine motor skills, which are really essential. For engaging in further academic tasks down the road. And then goal number four. Is around inclusion and equity. Educators commit to creating an inclusive and equitable school environment. That provides relevant and accessible educational opportunities, embodies social justice practices. And affirms all students' cultures and identities. As Lisa mentioned earlier, we have an initiative to bring three professional development workshops to all elementary educators. The first one is next Wednesday, October 20th. The title is Brave Elementary Educators Talk About Race. And the second initiative is around adding more titles to our Hillcrest diverse books collection to be used in all of our classrooms. Some of you may know that we've been building this diverse book collection for about three years now. And we've really found our students to be really engaged in these texts and our teachers are pretty excited about them as well. And then the last initiative for inclusion and equity is around developing and administering a school climate survey. For school staff and for school families. So those are the Hillcrest goals and initiatives. Tina, thank you for doing the screen sharing for me.
Thank you, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? Mike?
Well, actually, and it's not for this evening and it would be a question for all three, but I'm eager to learn more about the ELA. Curriculum that, that's featured in all three, but I think that, you know, we can do that at a future, you know, event.
We're all really excited about it. So I'm sure we'd be happy to come back and, you know, share what's happening with you.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Thanks very much, Sarah.
Welcome.
Did, Melissa's been patiently waiting.
Yep. Last but not least, so Tina is also going to do the same for me and she's going to share Sheffield. Sheffield, actually, I put in five, I kind of broke up the family engage, the engagement into two different goals, one for families, one for students. So goal one is about how do we engage our families as active participants? Our first initiative is about creating the slideshow for the open house. Ours was this evening. Again, a virtual open house, not ideal, but something unfortunate that we had to do in hopes that next year we can have families back into the building. And then our second initiative is to incorporate a story walk similar. Sarah had said that they had a lot of great feedback and participation. So we also would like to continue that at Sheffield. On a social emotional learning topic as well on our grounds. The second goal is around student engagement. How we engaging students as active learners? This has been a really tricky and an interesting one for us because again, you know, the start of the school year has been a rough one on a lot of levels for students. And we're trying to be as proactive as we can about really trying to get kids interested and excited about coming to school. So one of the things that we decided was that we wanted to talk about how we could have our, each of our team, grade level teams partner with a local organization. To promote a com, a common community project or goal. So each grade will reach out to the seniors, I mean, one grade might be responsible for doing something with the senior center. Another grade might be doing something about a clothing drive. So we really wanted to kind of. Have our students think about being more part of their community and giving back to their community. The second is a bi-monthly enrichment activity that engages students in some hands-on learning heterogenously. In the past, we have interviewed staff and faculty and asked, you know, what are some of your hobbies and interests? And we asked them that and they share it with us and then we don't do anything with it. So one of the things that we felt would be really exciting for kids is to be able to, be able to work with a teacher that might not be their classroom teacher. And learn a hobby or a skill or an activity. And a lot of these, of course, we all engage in because they're, they're soothing for us. We enjoy them and that helps us to be calm and focused. So we felt we needed to do that same thing and kind of teach our students this by modeling some of the hobbies and interests that we each have. So we're working on trying to. Get this started hopefully by the winter and then try to do it bi-monthly through the end of the school year and then offer students an opportunity to. Both have a first choice and a second choice. And then also hopefully might end up having some lifelong crocheters or crocheter, knitters or. Collagers or et cetera. So we're excited about trying to get our staff and faculty working with, you know, I might do an. I've actually signed up to do one as well and I love cooking or, and or knitting. And it'd be great to have second, third, fourth and fifth graders, 20 of them together. Sitting around, having a conversation and being able to engage in those kinds of things. So these are the kinds of things that we're trying to think about to get kids engaged and excited about school. Goal three is around, I don't remember, oh yes, monitoring the impact of instruction. So again, similar to Hillcrest and Gil. Our literacy data meetings, these are all based on our literacy plan. This helps our, our teachers with tier one and tier two instruction. And then our second initiative is around grade level teams planning the implementation of our wit and wisdom curriculum. Goal four. Okay. Developing grade level instruction. So our first initiative in this was again. Implementing wit and wisdom with fidelity. And then the second one is to utilize staff meetings to really share scaffolding strategies and techniques. I mean, the, the phrasing in the goal specifically is around providing scaffolding to ensure access. So I want to make sure that we're having opportunities for, for teachers to share some of their ideas. And strategies that they've been implementing that others, teachers might also benefit from and also utilizing their own classrooms. And then our last goal is around the inclusion, equity and social justice. So our first initiative, again, like the other three elementary schools is to provide some PD and our staff had requested that. They felt they were in. They needed more support and being able to have conversations with their students. So we definitely heard that. Request and looked into making sure we could provide that for them. The second one is to, for our counselors and staff to utilize our diverse literature consistently throughout the year. And incorporate our teaching tolerance standards. We really focused a lot of that last year when we were remote. And we found like we have invest conversations and discussions because we're really great about being forthright and honest during these. And we feel like those need to be happening more regularly. And then the last one is to continue year two of our ruler professional development. Two years ago, myself and Sarah went to with some representatives from our buildings to some training on ruler. It's a, put out by the Yale Center of Intelligence based off the book Permission to Feel. We implemented year one last year with staff. There are four parts of it. We only got through two of them with our staff and we feel like we want to continue that work. And eventually hopefully roll this out to students the following year. There's a lot of social emotional embedded in the curriculum and in the lessons for students about. Identifying and labeling and discussing their emotions. So we want to continue this professional development with our staff. For the rest of the school year. Are there any questions? Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks very much, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Mike?
Again, not so much a question, but I'm really excited about your, the. Cooperation with a community organization or business or whatever it was. I, I, I feel like that's going to really go places. And I can see it expanding to partnerships with the other schools so that kids of different age groups have a chance to share some of that. But that's a really exciting aspect, along with the others. But so I'm really interested to hear about that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Melissa.
Thank you.
We appreciate all these presentations. It's really so helpful and exciting to hear all the things that are going on. And I believe, Brian, that the high school, middle school will present at our next meeting or one shortly.
Yep, that, so the plan is to have Christopher present the high school, middle school, annual school improvement plan on October 26th. And I was, as I, we had discussed at. Agenda setting, school committee needs to vote to approve the, the plans.
Yes.
So the ones that are presented tonight will be the only thing that you'll have the opportunity to do. Christopher will give his in advance of the meeting, but he needed a little bit of additional time.
Okay. Would you prefer that we approve them all at the same time?
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was hoping that to approve all of the elementary ones this evening. Yeah. And then do the secondary after you hear it.
That's the way I should have phrased it. Yes, I will entertain a motion to approve the elementary school improvement plans for Hillcrest, Gil and Sheffield.
So.
Um, Mike, thank you. Did I hear Heather's second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and we'll have a roll call for approval. Page two. Jennifer?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to the next item of business. Where this is our first reading of policy ACAB. We've included our policy as it exists in a revised version. Brian, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. And this again is the, the downside of having a first year superintendent last year is that I'm bringing something to the committee late. Over the course of my first summer in the district, I received from our, our attorneys at the time when we were changing. Looking at making changes to the handbooks in the district and updating them as positions had changed. Our, our school attorney, Russell Dupre, had communicated to, communicated with us from their offices that. The anti-discrimination, the harassment and grievance procedure under, under Title IX had changed in the law. And so while I made the change to the staff handbook, so we're following the procedure. I didn't realize that it was also in district policy. So kind of moving backwards here. In that we've, we've, we've implemented in that I put it in in August of 2020 when we received it. So that our, our practices are updated, but we just need to formally go through the process of updating the district policy. Because I didn't realize it was a district policy as opposed, as opposed to just being something that needed to be in handbooks and then subsequently follow a procedure that would, would be followed. So I.
I overlooked that as well. I remember we had the discussion and I just, I think other things were at the forefront and we just missed it.
Yep. So I'm hopeful that this is the only one that falls into that category of something that we've added to our, our procedures and haven't gone through the policy update. So.
So this is considered a first reading. We have both versions included in the packet this evening. If anyone has any questions or comments at this time, we'll welcome them. If not, we have to have, we have three readings in any event. So we'll bring it back at a couple of other meetings. Mike?
Is it the, the only change that we're adding the, the names of the coordinators? And it's been applying a male and female coordinator?
Yeah. So that's part of what, what changed in the law and that, that really is the biggest change, but also the investigatory process changed. In that. There's, so for example, if there's a Title IX investigation, the district coordinator would coordinate that investigation and people would be assigned various roles. You know, so for example, we need, every school already has identified people to conduct investigations. And then there's a person who makes the decision and then there's a person who is, I'm typically at the point of appeal if for some reason a decision has to be made. And so while those things are all laid out, the one thing that we haven't done is identify a male. In the district. So we have female and male and we still have to identify a male.
Any other questions at the moment?
Thank you.
Okay. So we will bring this back to the next two meetings probably and then we'll need to vote to approve it. Okay, so we will bring this back to the next two meetings probably and then we'll need to vote to approve it after we've had sufficient time for three readings. Thank you. Um, next item is discussion about addressing issues of equity. And I believe there's some information in our packet about that as well this evening.
So I just put a brief um a brief description of. Uh, some of the things that are upcoming and in some cases are underway. Um, I wanted to thank and if Jean is here, I wanted her to come up because the last item that's on here is actually. Um, an idea for one of her goals, uh but. I had a conflict uh with a with a meeting and a few weeks ago. Um, that when Jean and I were meeting, we stumbled across an email where the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents with M A S C. Has created a pilot uh for superintendents to do an intensive study. Um. In eight monthly two hour sessions um with people that have been hired by. Um, the Department of Education, I'm sorry. With the uh with M A S S and M A S C. Um, there's a minimal cost because some part of it is offset by a grant uh from the Barr Foundation. But Jean was kind enough to attend and that and there were, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think seventy nine other school districts who were there. For a possible.
Who are on the Zoom, yeah.
For a possible twenty four spots. So Jean was going to submit the application on behalf of our district, however. They did indicate in the meeting that they would be giving priority to superintendents, so um. I didn't want to, you know, take away from our chances, so. I stole what she had put down in the application. We worked on it together and then I subsequently submitted it on behalf of the district and. We'll keep our fingers crossed because um, you know, of seventy nine districts. We're in a sort of a unique situation in that um we're considered to be a rural school. Um, with approximately twenty four percent of our student population district wide is non white. Uh, in addition to the fact that um, you know, we we have. Uh, hopefully within the geography out here that they're they're going to be take taking into consideration geographic placement of their choices for this pilot. Um, for this year, so I'm hopeful that our the unique nature of our district. Um, and location will help us hopefully get in and we should find out, I think. Early, late this week or early next week whether or not the application has been accepted. So anything you want to add to that, Jean?
No, I I think it would be a great experience. Um, it's both a personal and a professional uh growth experience for the superintendent, so. Like uh Brian said, fingers crossed that he gets in.
Thanks very much for your help with that, Jean. Um. I supported uh the students today, the high school students, the tenth and eleventh graders who were selected to participate as active bystanders for this year. Uh, we still have two more days of training, uh and I was very excited now, you know, having moved. Um. To the superintendency and out of the principalship to once again have the opportunity to work with students, so I will have at least two more days with them and then we'll serve as their advisor over the course of this year. And uh as the principals had mentioned in their presentation. On the October twentieth Professional Development Day is a day that's entirely focused on uh dealing with issues of equity in our school district and learning. Around that, uh you heard the brave elementary educators talk about race is the first of a three part series. Um, that's work that's being delivered by the Collaborative for Educational Services and I also wanted to uh to thank. Um, the elementary educators who have been going through their experiences last year in an effort to diversify their literature and engage in in. Uh, in conversations with students about differences in race and culture. Um, that they made a request for this kind of work and uh I think it speaks volumes of the way that our. Teachers think about how they want to be able to be most effective with kids and to be able to remove their own biases. Um, so that they can have a more professional interaction with students on very challenging issues. Um, in addition to the elementary staff. Uh, twenty middle school teachers are going to be doing a remote session with prob and mediation to help them understand the units of instruction that will be delivered by the high school students to the middle school students. Um, by the trained active bystanders that'll also take place on the twentieth. And then the remaining secondary staff will be participating in one of two options that they can choose from. One is uh speak up at school for the uh learning for justice and Jean, do you want to give a little, do you mind giving a little description about that?
Sure, so Speak Up at School is a program um put together by. The Teaching Tolerance or Learning for Justice Group that is really about kind of quick go to um practices for educators to help. Not only educators speak up at school when they hear injustices, but to provide supports for students. So staff will be going through. Kind of a self guided small group activity uh to build their practice with that.
And then the other option uh for high school staff also includes the option for students that up to twenty five staff and students. Um, may select to be trained to be facilitators for discussions that will follow the student viewing of the film, I Am Not a Racist, Am I? Um, and will be able to report back sometime in November about uh. Who participated in that and what our plans are for showing the film a little bit later in the school year. Um, I did also want to say thank you to those. Uh educators at the high school and middle school who have banded together to create. Uh, and have been had been meeting remotely, now able to meet in person. I attended the first, my first meeting of. Uh, the racial justice group at the high school and um. There are a strong group of educators that are, it's all voluntary. Uh, they've done, put this together on their own and I'm very impressed with the work that they have already done and very excited about the prospect of perhaps. Looking at that as as a model also for work at the elementary level or continue dialogue to help us inform professional development for the future. And then the last item is a faculty and staff equity growth survey and Jean, I'm going to let you take this one since this this is your idea. Uh, and I forget, was this one thing that you were looking at as a potential uh professional practice goal or student learning goal for this year?
Yeah, so for professional practice for myself, um so a lot of the work in organizing professional development for staff around diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, you know, I don't want any of it to be for not, and I really hope that it helps teachers and staff grow in both their professional and personal. Um, you know, awareness. So I developed uh kind of stole from, you know, why create recreate the wheel. Um, but I borrowed from a company that has done some equity work before and so right before. PD on Wednesday, the twentieth, all staff will take this short survey. Um, and it's anonymous, um but we will have them also take it towards the end of the year and you know, my goal is that I. You know, help put together some work that will help people grow. So the goal is that they will see some growth. Um, from the beginning of the year now and when we've kind of started this work intentionally to the end of the year.
Thank you, Jean. A great idea. Shane?
Thank you both. That's a lot of great information provided. Anyone else in the committee have any comments or questions about all of that?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, discussion about school committee goals. Um, we have included the updated version of the work that we did at our last working meeting. Um. Toward setting a new set of three year goals for the school committee. Um. This is here for you to look at. We don't necessarily need to vote this evening. I'm sure people may have edits that they think of. Um, we did a lot of work in a couple of hours last time, which was quite impressive, I must say. Um, especially doing it remotely, but thanks to Cassie, she manned the. Google Docs document and got us, got it all in there and it was great work. Um. I think, you know, personally, I think they're looking pretty good, but if people have suggestions, please don't hesitate. We can bring them back again. See if people are thinking things need to be revised a bit or. Um, if people want to work on the language or even some of the items, that's perfectly fine. Anything at the moment? Mike?
Uh, no specific uh content or discussion, but. I was, uh, I I agree with, I think what you're saying, that it was a very productive session. And sort of building on the comments about Zoom meetings, I mean, I wouldn't mind having another. We tackled that uh pretty effectively. I'm not sure it was. Completely done and uh. There may be interest in adding some or talking more about some of the action steps. But I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if other people feel the same way, but another uh meeting. Uh, for that purpose in the next month or so wouldn't bother me any, but just one person's idea.
Mm hmm.
But it's.
Let's support that.
Um, Jennifer, yes?
Yeah, I would support that. Initiative.
Yep, so maybe we should look toward um maybe by our next meeting in October, look toward a date perhaps in November. Um, if that, that looks like a reasonable suggestion, we could just do kind of a thumbs up if that's okay with people. We don't necessarily have to. Have an actual vote on something like that, but that sounds like a great idea. Okay, thank you. I will write that on the list. Thank you. And our next item is discussion and potential vote on M A S C res- resolutions. For the upcoming conference in Hyannis, the first, the end of the first week in November. Um, they're included in your packet and. For people who are not familiar with the process or have managed to not think about it recently. Um. Yeah, there is a uh meeting, a delegate assembly as part of the Mass Association of School Committees Conference, which is held once a year in November in Hyannis. This year it's held in person and remotely. Um, the resolutions each school committee. Um. Who belongs to the association is entitled to have a delegate and Jennifer is our delegate this year. And the delegates are charged with voting for the resolutions when the uh assembly is held. We've always um. Been able to come up with a vote that the committee agrees on, but after one year when. Several amendments were added to the resolution at the assembly and it changed the meaning and the import of it. Um, after that time, we gave permission to our delegate to. Um. Abstain if it seems as though the intent of the resolution was changed enough that. It wasn't what we had looked at in the first place and what we had agreed on. Because that did uh come up at one point and left. I was a delegate that year and I thought I don't think I can vote on this. It's changed so much. So that's uh another thing we could keep in mind as we're doing this. So if people are willing, I will go through and give us each the short version of the resolutions. You have the complete text in front of you. Each resolution has uh several whereas is that explain why this has come up as a topic. Um, these resolutions are. When, if they are passed, they're then passed on to the appropriate bodies to consider. Um, sometimes it's the legislature, sometimes it's the Department of Education. Sometimes the resolutions achieve the desired goal and sometimes they are just there as a suggestion that doesn't necessarily seem to be. Uh, work done by the body that we submitted to, but it's a way of establishing some of the interests that we have. Um, resolution one is about dedicated funding for school based clinics and services. Speaks to the need for school based health centers and their value. So therefore be it resolved that M A S C support proposals that would establish dedicated funding for school based. Physical health and mental health clinics and services. I think one of the op. Important words there is funding because that's always been an issue in doing this sort of thing. Um. And the rationale is that maintaining physical, social, emotional wellness in students translates into establishing an optimal learning environment. And sets the students up for future health standards. And um so therefore, what are people thinking about that resolution? Mike?
My uh initial thought was who 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 are they going to take the money from? Because it's a uh a zero sum game, the budget. Uh, and this is an expensive proposal, one that I I support uh uh in. On the general idea of philosophically, but I'm afraid that if we ask them to set up. The centers and schools, they'd take the money from schools. So I, I mean. I wouldn't vote against it necessarily, but I'd like to see where they think the money's going to come from.
And and that I would not be at all surprised if that's a question that comes up at the assembly. Um, my understanding of the typical way it's done, um they're looking for additional funding perhaps from Department of Health. Um, some other category as opposed to taking it out of our already small. Amounts of money that are provided by the state, but good question. Anyone else? Okay, are people feeling confident that they want to vote yes or no or abstain from voting on this particular one if there's not enough information? We can do it either way. Mike?
Well, I would feel confident voting for it if the money were uh to to be shown to be coming from somewhere else.
Okay, I have a feeling that will come up that this group that meets is not really shy about that type of question. Um. It, Jennifer?
Oh, um, did you read my mind, Jane?
I I saw you leaning forward. I've learned to read the room as a teacher and it looks like you have something you'd like to offer.
Yeah, so I'm I'm curious, as I understand it, um we vote. For or against a thing and then when I'm there, I support that, the pre existing votes unless, like you said. The language has changed or strayed so far from what we agreed upon, I would abstain.
Yes.
So is the opportunity to find out the details, does that come before? We're there or so like Mike legitimately says, well, I'm for it as long as funding is not. Being taken away from like, you know, school books or something, but we don't know that. So then what would you advise? For me to do in that, this sort of position?
The usual way that it happens is. Uh, delegates at the delegate assembly are given an opportunity to ask questions or propose amendments or. As long as they are prepared ahead of time. To submit, if they want an amendment, they have to submit it in writing at the same time that they express it out to the group. Um, but certainly there's always a long line of delegates that have questions.
Okay, so that in that case, I could get clarification and vote accordingly, basically.
Right, I do not believe there's any mechanism to submit questions ahead of time.
Okay.
I don't believe.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. Okay, so uh I don't, in terms of the.
You froze, Jane.
Yes or no, but that. Is, since it's not official uh. Business that we usually vote on like policies and things like that, I would be willing to accept whatever people feel is best. Is it an up down? Thumbs up, thumbs down method, okay, or is somebody feeling we should have an official member vote?
I think a thumbs up is fine. I think also I would love to just send a email. I don't know. Um, if this is appropriate, but send an email sort of summarizing what I understand to be the consensus. And then for feedback, I don't know if that has to happen during a meeting. Or it can happen through email. I'm I'm not sure.
It has to happen during a meeting because of open meeting law. If we react. Or express an opinion outside of a meeting, that's not allowed.
Right, so it wouldn't be me expressing an opinion more summarizing the meeting and saying, do I understand this correctly?
Oh, that's fine. You can ask for information, sure. Uh, Mike, questions or?
No, I was just gonna say if uh Jenna were Jennifer were to generate that. She could give it to you to include in the next packet, which would be before her meeting, so we could approve it at the next meeting.
Yes, we do have that time. It's one of the reasons I put it on as early as I did, sometimes worth the last minute, but it seemed to make sense to get it done as quickly as possible. So if that's acceptable, Jennifer, you could.
Um, awesome, thanks.
Anyone object to the thumbs up, thumbs down approach to this? Okay, all those in favor of? Okay, all those in favor of resolution one, thumbs up. If not, thumbs down. Okay, that looks unanimous to me, so. The second one is the homework gap and wifi internet access. Be it resolved that Massachusetts Association of School Committees files for and support legislation, which seeks to provide free broadband internet to all K-12 students in Massachusetts. Uh, be it further resolved that MASC support federal initiatives and legislation improve national high-speed broadband internet infrastructure expansions, the FCC's E-rate program to include homes of K-12 students or any other steps to expand free access to reliable high-speed broadband to the students of our nation. Uh, how are people feeling? I'm seeing some thumbs up already. Does that look like something? There is a designation, they're hoping that the money will come from federal initiatives and legislation. And it certainly has proven to be a need with virtual learning. Thumbs up, thumbs down. Looks like we've got it unanimously. Thank you. Resolution three, Ideal Full Funding Act. There's a lot of whereas's for that one, but moving to the, therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Congressional delegation to reintroduce and promote the passage of the IDEA Full Funding Act. And that refers to, um, the fact that we need to provide a free and appropriate education for all students in the least restrictive environment, including students with disabilities who qualify for special education services and in such a way as not to be an extraordinary burden on the finances of public schools. Currently, federal funding through IDEA is only providing approximately fifteen percent of the extra cost to educate receiving special education services, far less than the forty percent which was promised in the IDEA resolution. And people have proposed fully funding it, um, through an incremental seven-year increase in funding, which has had both bipartisan and bicameral support to achieve. So are we looking at a thumbs up, thumbs down, or in the middle if you're not sure what you think? I see pretty much. That looks good. All right. No, no, I don't mean to say good. I'm not making judgments. I just think I saw everybody. The next one I have to editorialize, it's a, an issue after my own heart as a previous elementary school teacher. It's about recess. There's been an issue with time on learning where recess for children is not included in time on learning and it's become an issue with some districts where there isn't enough time in the day for children to actually have a recess every day, which seems a huge issue. So therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees support legislation. Current bills are, are Senate 383 and House 695, calling for at least twenty minutes of uninterrupted supervised, safe and unstructured free play recess per day, which cannot be excluded from structured learning time requirements and may not increase the total number of hours required in the school year for Massachusetts elementary school students. Thinking, yes, sorry to editorialize, but I had to get in on that one. Thank you. That's unanimous. Resolution five is zero tolerance policies, which have also caused many issues over the years. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees call upon the legislature to enact or amend legislation. The current bills are Senate 344 and House 664 to encourage the use of restorative therapeutic and educational approaches to incidents whenever possible over the use of zero tolerance policies in order to provide students the best chance to remain in the public school systems of the Commonwealth. Part of that is based on the fact that many incidents of suspensions in Massachusetts do not involve violent criminal or drug-related incidents, such that one would think a zero tolerance policy would be about. So I think there's an, a move because students who have suspended, who are suspended are three times more likely to drop out or be pushed out of school. And the students have a three-point-five times higher likelihood of being arrested than students who are completing high school. The statistics are out there.
So what is the zero tolerance? It, sorry, I'm not asking you to, you know, I don't, not asking for a dissertation at this moment, but like, could I, where can I find the details of what they mean when they say zero tolerance policy? Because I think I just read what's in this and it doesn't seem, it doesn't, I'm not sure what it means yet. I know, it looks like I know what it doesn't mean, but I don't know what it does mean.
Right, I'm, Mike?
Could jump in because we covered this in our Equity Steering Committee. And the conversation came up because actually the families in the district wanted a zero tolerance policy for, on racism and racist acts. So what came up is that zero, most, the zero tolerance policies they're talking about are property crime, drug crime and violent crime. Uh, it's not, it's not well specified in this act and frankly, you could just call it something else and you'd be in the same place. I, I hope what they're trying to avoid is any kind of automatic referral of students to law enforcement, which is what the school-to-prison pipeline is all about. Uh, I, because I looked specifically for zero tolerance policies on racism and none of those were associated with minorities being sent to jail, which if you think about it, wouldn't make any sense. So, uh, I, I could certainly go along with trying to avoid the school-to-jail pipeline. But I, I agree with you that the thing is poorly worded, so I'm not really sure. I'll vote on it myself.
So should we, um, well, maybe in this email that I send, I'll try to summarize what would make sense to vote yes for and what might make sense to vote no for. And then we can sort of, that way we could, you know, I, I'm sure I'll find out more information in person, whether through my own question, either through my own questions or through other folks' questions, at which time I'd have to make a decision based on what we've previously agreed upon.
That makes sense to me. Are people thinking that's fine? Okay, you can, um, Belle, did you have a theory?
Yeah, I think it's also an effort. I think in general, there is a, a chain of thought that expulsion in and of itself, regardless of whether it's a chain to, to jail or not, is appropriate. And then it becomes a question of do we have the, I mean, honestly, do we have the funding for the schools to do that? Because that requires a whole different set of, of, um, skills in your staff to handle all of the potential suspensions under the current systems. So I think it's much broader than, than just going to jail, but I also think Mike's thoughts on that are, are very strong and, and certainly part of the issue.
And I think there was, some years back, there was a push among some school districts for a zero tolerance policy in the sense that it seemed any infraction by a student was, I don't want to label it inappropriately. I, I think it was more looking at instances in terms of punitive responses. Whereas I think more recently, there has been a focus on the positive nature of restorative therapeutic approaches to fixing the situation. I think it's, you know, people dealing with young children, which was my only experience as a teacher, is you focus more on how to make the situation better, how to fix it, how to, an apology of action, something that helps the situation and doesn't intensify it. Um, and I think that I seem to see that myself coming with even older students and I see that as being something that is educationally sound. So that's probably it, but you're right, this leaves a lot, a lot of things you can fill in, I guess. Nick?
I, I think that, um, zero tolerance policies are sort of like mandatory minimum sentencing rules. And that's really what they're trying to get rid of, where, where you're not looking at the context of whatever infraction it is without automatically issuing some sort of punishment to the student, you know, like you do A and B happens every time, regardless of context, and I think that's what they're trying to get rid of.
That's a helpful explanation. Thank you. Heather?
So I just did a quick little search on the, um, manuals and Lynn, I only, Lynn was the first one that came up. It's under J I H C. I'm sorry, J I C H, there's this E dash, E dash two, but it does talk about zero tolerance and I just lost it. Give me one second. Um, and it, it is very specifically violence, weapons, drugs, harassment and civil like, civil rights violations. So my guess is that is what this intent is. These are never worded well, ever.
Yeah, I mean, the language says, um, well, I know Jane already said, but call upon legislature to enact or amend legislation to encourage the use of restorative therapeutic and educational approaches to incidents wherever possible over the use of zero tolerance policies in order to provide students with the best chance. And so I would, you know, part of me in general wants to say, yes, I support that. Sounds good to me. But it also is still a little bit vague.
Joanna?
Um, I think although vague, and I do agree, the wording is, is not great, um. I think although vague, I think the point of it being to come up with more forward-thinking approaches to keeping students in school longer than putting them outside of like into suspensions, even if they are having issues that are, you know, related to these, um, zero tolerance under that umbrella. Um, we've talked about statistically how many more students do end up in the school-to-prison pipeline because of these things. So personally, despite the wording, if we're going from something that's like Nick pointed to, almost like a man, um, um, mandatory minimum rather than an individualized approach, which it sounds like the other option would be, I would be for that over the zero poli- the zero tolerance policy overall. So that's just my two cents there.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I think Jennifer, since you're the one expressing our vote, would you prefer that we indicate now if we have a feeling one way or another? Or would you rather get back to us with what you suggested?
Yeah, no, I mean, it sounds like everyone, to me, and yeah, you can do a thumbs up if you, you know, a thumbs up or vote, visual vote if you want. It sounds like everyone's on the same page about decreasing, you know, supporting what this says, which is to decrease the zero tolerance. Right? Yes. Cool. Thank you.
I think it's something when I read it more times and try to think about it, it becomes a little clearer. It still isn't a great way to word it, but at least I think I understand it a little better. Okay.
Increasing, increasingly socially just aspect of it.
Yes, yes, thank you. Resolution six, alternative to MCAS testing. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees call upon the legislature to establish a commission to research and analyze alternative means for students to demonstrate academic achievement, which can be used to satisfy graduation requirements for individual students and accountability standards for Massachusetts public schools and school districts in place of the standardized MCAS test. The current bills are Senate 293 and House 612. Heather?
Um, can those alternatives be just passing classes? I'm so, I mean, I'm all for some testing. I don't want an alternative to this test. I wanna, if you want to reword it as get rid of MCAS and high stakes testing, I'm all for it.
Um, I was trying to remember, I think that resolution has come up previously, other years. It hasn't gone anywhere. I think they're attempting to phrase it slightly differently. It doesn't say an alternate test. It says an alternate means, which I think is their way of hoping it will get someone's support as opposed to the instances previously that have not been able to get enough support.
And Jen, if, when you go, if you have a chance to speak, if you'd like to mention if they do want to do testing, if we can focus on nonprofit organizations that would do that, because I do believe that this is a financially, a financial.
Yeah, one of the
It's a motivation, oh, sorry, Jane, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Is the motivation for testing just like to provide sort of efficacy or whatever? Like, you know, we're saying we have a good education system because look, these kids passed the test. Is that from their side, the, the motivation for these tests? I, it's been so long since I thought about standardized testing of any kind.
I think sometimes it seems just to me, um, that the state is trying to be able to compare districts. And
Like to legitimize or like create a legitimacy around, I don't know, it's such, it feels like such a big topic.
It, it is, it is. And I think the, the thought process seems to be that if everybody takes the same test, the results will enable you to compare districts to each other. And we kind of know, if you have any experience in education, that's really not so. It's a theory. Joanna?
I think, um, I have a background in a lot of, um, test and measurements development. Um, and there was a movement like ten to fifteen years ago for more data, more, more, gather more data, show more, uh, metric points. Everyone needs to do this. Teachers' testing became more involved too, like it's, it focused on teachers as well as students. Um, and like Heather pointed out, it is like large corporations partnering with states. New York has regions, but we kind of, ours is called MCAS. Um, and like Jane said, we are trying to find ways to provide, um, legislature, the federal government. Everyone who's now asking for metrics, data that shows what we are achieving through our curriculum, through teaching. Um, it's all based on what, like what metrics you will show and how much money you may get because of that. Um, but like everyone's mentioning, individual students have different individual needs. We all test differently. And standardized testing has shown time and time again to have faults and issues. So, um, I agree with Heather, but I also agree with this, um, movement potentially because although the alternative may be a portfolio of your work that you've done throughout the four years, it would, it would be much more individualized than being tested the way that MCAS was set up. So I know I was like the first class that MCAS was tested on. It didn't count for me, but it did for every class after me. I'll date myself a bit, but, um, I remember like even our class, like some of the essays and stuff, we just wrote, we are not taking this test. So the way they developed the testing on the front end, um, I've looked at the data back and forth. I think having any alternative other than the one before us just has how higher ed's moved away from just only SAT-based things. There are other ways now where students don't have to just take the SAT and that's all we look at, or just their grades and their SAT. Um, is a good pushback to metrics, 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 because metrics are great, but they only show you one side of the coin. So when you have like all of these different moving parts and you can look at individualized base things as well, um, it can be super helpful for students who don't fit into those boxes.
Thank you. Heather?
Uh, maybe it just isn't about, it's going off topic probably. I just find that there's probably more qualitative information that we could get rather than just sticking with these numbers. I mean, our graduate, graduation rates say an awful lot about your school, to be honest, and, and things like that. Um, and keep it individualized without, um, burdening the teacher so much to create a education plan for each and every student. But like I said, that might not be for this conversation.
Well, it's, it's a point for sure. Mike?
Not to pile on, but yes, this is all about accountability. The state was about to decide to give a lot of money to education, but business pushed back and said, well, how do we know they're spending the money properly in the first place? So it was called a seismic shift by our own representatives. They thought we were So it was called a seismic shift by our own representatives. They thought we were going to actually improve education. Instead, they approved accountability, which is, we have not had legitimate results of M CAS in ten years. For standardized events and our standardized tests and doesn't seem to have made a difference to the students one way or another.
It's, they're all excellent points. I mean, I think it points out here that. Other states, university and colleges have shown that project based assessments, authentic assessments, portfolios, other things that people have mentioned. Can provide. Opportunities for students to demonstrate academic achievement instead of these high stakes tests. So I think that's one of the goals here is to move away from that or just try to get them to begin to consider that's not necessarily. Everything that one might think it is. Okay. Are we in favor of this? Are we in favor of getting more information? Are we saying, you know, make it go away if you can? I see a lot of thumbs up. All right. Thank you. Resolution seven, school committee and receivership. This refers to the state putting a school district in receivership. Which is a complicated thing to explain, but when that happens. If a district is placed in receivership, the state receivership includes all powers of the superintendent. And the school committee within the district. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation with seeks to preserve the authority of the elected body. The school committee as provided in Mass General Law Chapter sixty-nine, Section one K. By deleting the words and school committee as noted and by inserting the following. Nothing in this section shall permit the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education or the Commissioner to remove the authority of the school committee. Right now, when a receiver takes over a district, the school committee is pretty much a figurehead, I believe. Be it further resolved that M A S E support local initiatives and legislation to restore school committee oversight. Of the superintendent and or receiver, including but not limited to goal setting, performance review and evaluation process. The rationale is that. Receivership has had a multitude of issues that go along with it. Jennifer?
I don't think I know what is meant by receiver.
If a district is, I'll just give you what I think the short version is, if it hasn't changed, if a district is considered to be. Underperforming as the state designates it. Then a receiver is appointed to be in charge of the district. And that person takes over the role of superintendent, but also takes over the role of school committee. At this point, and they pretty much make the decisions.
Jenny, did you say something? We lost you there for, we lost your sound.
Jennifer, we didn't hear you if you were speaking.
I wonder. Jen, can Jennifer, can you hear us?
Thank you.
Okay.
You back? I think one of the issues that's shown up as since the state has been doing that sort of thing is. Once they place a district in receivership. The school committee who have been elected by the district do not have a voice in matters. And there also has been an issue with not having clearly set guidelines on the ways in which. A district can get back local control or the timeframe. All of these things have been evident. After they started putting districts in receivership. That there's an issue. How does it ever stop? How do you get control again? It's become. A real issue. Mike?
And there's no accountability either. They're not going to tell you why they're doing what they're doing. If they tell you what they're doing at all, they they rip up contracts. There's lots of antisocial behavior that happens. It can also be economic. We were threatened with receivership after. As we were going into our second. District meeting session. So it could also be an economic thing.
Bill, did I see your hand as well?
Yeah, you did. I thought. I think most receiverships that I've ever heard of are. Although they're, they're related to school failure, they're really economic. And. I think Lawrence was in receivership for a long time. I think Holyoke and Springfield have both. Had issues and in all cases. Even though it's. Attached to school success, it's really. In many instances, a monetary thing, and that's. The disgraceful part of it. It just shows again that. There isn't enough money out there for what's being required of various communities. And all of those communities that. I just mentioned also happen to be historically. Socioeconomically challenged. Though I think that's another issue.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have a thumbs up, thumbs down in the middle?
I'm in the middle.
Okay, it looks like it's mostly thumbs up. Okay.
Yes.
One middle. Okay. Eight, electric school buses. Therefore be it resolved that M A S E petition Congress to appropriate thirty billion dollars. For improving the electrical supply infrastructure and providing electric buses and charging stations. There you go. What are we thinking about that, Jennifer?
I mean, in theory, I think it's good, but. It feels like I want to understand the contracts, like who's getting these contracts? What what is the motivation behind it? Those kinds of things. And I don't know that we can, well, we certainly can't know this from what we're reading right now, but. I'm not even sure that I would, that they would be transparent if these questions were to come up at the conference.
Right, I, I think, I don't know what I think because there's the whole issue I was, you know, reading recently about. The idea behind electric vehicles and the issue of what happens when the. Batteries end up in the landfill because they have to be replaced. How is that electricity produced? Is it produced in a green way or not? And if it isn't, then are we accomplishing what we hope to accomplish? I mean, there's a lot of questions. That's all. I don't want to, you know, confuse the issue, but it's confusing. Anybody have a theory about that? I'm, yeah, I'm not sure. Bill? You're muted, Bill. I'm sure it's interesting, so I'd like to hear it.
No, I'm just laughing at myself. I said I have theories about lots of stuff. But. I think it is true that. A lot of things are going. Electric in terms of. Mitigating the global warming stuff. The aspect of do we have the infrastructure to support it is a big issue, but aside from that. It's nice for, for school communities to perhaps support that. But I don't know that. It's worth spending a lot of time. For this, for the association to be trying to promote it and expect results. So I don't know if it's a resolution worth, worth bothering, but. You know, I would say I'd vote for it if that was it, but we're not going to change the world. With school buses.
Okay, Nick?
I just wanted to say incidentally that there is already five billion dollars allocated in the infrastructure bill that's. Still making its way slowly. Through Congress.
Right, right. The one that is out there at least, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
For school buses and electrification of school buses.
Okay, that would be a good place to start for sure. So how are people feeling? Thumbs up, thumbs down, in between?
I don't want to vote yet on this.
Oh, that's okay. You don't have to.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know either. I'm always torn by that sort of thing. It. You know, there's good ideas, but then I'm not sure how it works out. As somebody said, there's always an economic issue as well as infrastructure. Heather?
Yeah, I support the theory, but it's like. Poignant that we're talking about adding thirty billion dollars. I know that from Congress, but they could give it to us to. To the schools that need money.
Exactly. That's what I was gonna say.
Like that would be probably better spent.
I know if they have that money, could we talk? Joanne?
So the buses would have to be bought by the vendor. And then we would get a bid from the vendor on what those buses would cost to operate. And I imagine the cost would go up because those buses are going to cost more than what the current buses cost. Right? And they're going to be spending more on electricity instead of on gas. And then, of course, you have the whole battery issue when it dies. So. Just my two cents.
I know. Jennifer?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to understand both the opportunity cost of like these purchase decisions and also. What is the carbon footprint? Through like a calculus projection of one versus the, I mean, there are so many variables. Yeah. I don't know. And and the battery thing, the landfill topic is gigantic, in my opinion, the whole, like we are manufacturing. As a world, not just a country, so many things that we aren't giving thought for thought to end of life. Like, we're not looking at things in a full lifecycle manner, so. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I know I've only begun to, you know, read up on the whole issue and there's just more questions than answers when I read it. I mean, it sounds like a good theory. I don't know. What are people thinking? Do you want to? Not, well, I see some, you can sideways if you don't know, you can up it, you can down, you can. It's a, it's free. This is, you know, you're entitled to vote your opinion here. Okay, did I freeze or are people just unsure?
You froze. Some people are unsure, some people are sure.
Yeah, I, I think I got overly interested in the topic and it just overloaded my computer. Mike?
Uh, maybe we could all. Put some more thought into this one. Let's talk about research and looking at the deeper discussion and bring it up again at the next meeting because we're going to review these. Anyway.
Sure. I think if that's okay. Jennifer, with you? Resolution nine is prohibiting the use of Native American mascots. Therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees support legislation calling for regulations. Prohibiting public schools from using an athletic team name, logo or mascot which names refers to represents. Or is associated with the Native Americans, including aspects of Native American cultures and specific Native, of Native American tribes. The current bill is Senate two ninety-four. The regulations would not prohibit a Native American tribe. As identified by the Commission on Indian Affairs located within the boundaries of the Commonwealth from. Choosing to use a native related name or logo for a sports team comprised of its tribal members. Including a tribal school or intramural league or from that tribal nation, giving explicit consent for a school to use their particular tribal name. Does that look like, looks like we're already voting. Looks like pretty much. Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes. Okay, thank you so much. Wow, they're always a bit lengthy, the resolutions, but we've done it. Next item on the agenda is update on discussion about six town regional planning board. Anybody have any new information on that? We are going to include it, I think, in our agendas pretty much all the time in case there's any new updates.
Not for me.
Okay. Anything, Brian?
I just, I haven't, Joanne will have a little bit. But you know, one of the things that I wanted to be able to do was, and I'm going to coordinate with Sabrina, I'll contact Steve Ellis. I'd like to get the calendars squared away because it frequently seems as though whether it's a subcommittee of the group. The entire, or the entire group that they're frequently scheduled up against. At the very least, school committee, which I think would be important to avoid. And of course, they have to do it in both districts. So I think if. Between Montague and Gill, if I can get all of the calendars and bring that to the group, you know, or forward that to Mike Notton and Alan Genovese before the next meeting. Maybe it will be easier for people to attend.
Thanks. Joanne, did you have something on that?
Yep. So we applied for two grants. One of them was the continuation of the prior year grant. It wasn't able to just roll forward. We had to apply for it. It was autumn, pretty much automatic. So we received those funds. And we have put out a bid for a facilitator. And that work would have to be done before the end of December. And if we get the other grant, then that would just be a continuation of that facilitation. So this bid is due on October twentieth. And so we would award that. To. You know, whoever applies for it. So if anyone knows anyone that facilitates meetings and gathering data and putting information out there. You can tell them about our bid. It's on our website.
Okay, I did see that mentioned somewhere. And we'll continue to bring information, Bill.
Yeah, I just wanted to. Ask Brian if sometime I could get together with him to talk around. This whole concept and, and where he'd like to see it go or not go. So it's just really to see where he sits personally on the stage of this whole effort.
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to meet with you, Bill.
And now I just have to. Organize myself to get in touch with you to try to arrange a time. I'll try to do that in the next week or so.
Okay. All right. Sounds good, Bill. Thank you.
Okay, the last item is established subcommittee membership. It's. Come to our attention that. As since Carly was of necessity, had to resign because she was moving out of town. The negotiation subcommittee for custodial and food service is short a member. I am a member and Cassie as chair is a member. It gives us two people to create a quorum. But if there's an issue and one of us is unable to make the meeting, having a third person really does make it work a lot better. So we're kind of wondering if somebody on the committee would like to volunteer since we're still. Completing negotiations with the custodial and the food service groups. If anyone thinks they might want to participate in that, that would be helpful. Mike?
Yeah, I'll show up for the one meeting for them to tell us why they don't want to do it.
You're willing to be on those two subcommittees? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have completed the business. I know it took us a long time this evening, but we've done a lot of work. Thank you so much for your continued focus. We're not going to approve the minutes this time because I see there's a section that was omitted when we were given the minutes. So we'll bring that back next time with the complete information. Agenda requests at any point. I've written down ones that came up this evening. Actually, Cassie, Brian and I are going to do an initial agenda planning tomorrow to get a head start on it this time and then complete it. It'll be completed next week. Next regularly scheduled meetings, October twenty-sixth and November ninth, and they both will be virtual at six thirty unless there's an executive session. Anything else? Motion to adjourn in that case.
So move.
Mike? And Heather? And we will go through a roll call because I just like to do that. Fill my water on my paper, but here it is. Jennifer?
Yes, please.
Heather? Mike?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Nick? And myself. Yes, thank you all. I really appreciate it. I think we set a new time limit tonight, but boy, did we get a lot done. So good for us. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you so much, Tina.